Okay, I'd like to call this public hearing to order. Rule call please.
Mr. Schuster?
President.
Mr. McAndrew?
President.
Dr. Rothschild? Mr. Donahue? Mr. Gahn?
Here. The purpose, or, sorry, Mrs. Reed?
Thank you. The purpose of said public hearing is to hear testimony and discuss the following. File of the Council number sixty-five, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the HUD two thousand twenty-one annual action plan for community planning and development programs to be funded under the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program, and Emergency Solutions Grants Program for the period beginning January one, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you. At this time, would someone please make a motion to accept public comment?
So move.
Second?
There's been a motion and a second to accept public comment for file of the Council number sixty-five, two thousand twenty-one. Mrs. Reed, would you please read any comments received into the record?
Thank you. There was no public comment submitted for this hearing.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
Motion to adjourn?
This public hearing is adjourned. Okay, thanks, everybody. Welcome to our Scranton City Council caucus. Today's Tuesday, April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. We do have Director Cipriani here with us, the Director of the Office of Economic and Community Development, and Eileen is going to talk to us about Agenda Item Six A, which is our action plan. And that's what we just had the public hearing on. So, Eileen, I'll turn it over to you if you want to start us off, and then we'll take questions from any of the council members. Oh, sorry, you're muted, Eileen.
Apologize. Thank you, Council, and thank you for having me here tonight to talk about our action plan for two thousand twenty-one. So, the city was notified by HUD that we would be receiving CDBG funding in the amount of two-point-eight million, home funding in the amount of six-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand, and emergency solution funding in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand. We opened our application period and received applications from city entities, from the city itself. Those are, we presented them to you in our spreadsheet. We've also, after reviewing the projects, had our input from our Citizens Committee. So, we were really excited this year that we were able to fund almost all the projects that came before us. There were a few that we had to reduce funding, and there were one or two that we were not able to accommodate this year, but on the whole, we were very, very happy about the way we were able to do this. We also were able to use some of our CARES Act dollars to fill in, especially in the emergency solutions grant, where we had a little bit of a shortfall. So, i-in general, we're excited about what we're seeing going forward. We're going to be able to partner up and marry up some of these grant opportu, these opportunities with grant opportunities from the state, so that we could, and that's especially in the parks area where we could do that. So, we could actually double, if we're word at the grant, double the amount of funding that we could put in, invest in our parks. So, that's going to be our strategy going forward. I believe a couple of weeks ago, Tom McLean was able to speak to Council about the parks assessment. So, we were using that, even though it's not completed, we're using the draft version of that as a guide as to where we need to address the parks in the most immediate way. We're looking for areas where there's ADA compliance issues and safety issues. So, they've been the target of what we're doing with our parks dollars. But I'll, I'll stop there and ask if anyone from Council has any questions about how we went about the, the process or the projects that we're able to fund.
Thanks, Eileen. Could you just take us through the application process and, and when that occurred for this action plan? When people submitted applications and then what that process looks like and what it will look like next year, the, the dates for applications for the funding?
Um, I don't know what the dates will be going forward next year, but we opened this up in the late fall for individuals or for entities to apply. They were posted, publicly posted on our website, and we did receive a, a robust amount of applications as we would. A lot of them were the projects that we typically fund every year. But once we got them in, we evaluated them in-house. We had a scoring rubric that we put together, graded them that way, and then, as I said before, our citizens group was able to review them and evaluate them as well.
Okay, great. There's a couple of projects that I wanted to touch on really quick. The one, and you talked about the parks a minute ago. I know that you're, the city's planning on funding one-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars for the, it says park improvements. Now, am I correct in understanding that you're, you're not exactly sure how you're going to use that money yet? It's just going towards the McLean study, and then you'll decide where to kind of plug that, that funding in?
Well, no. Well, what we found out, back when we did the exercise to, for the substantial amendment for the CARES dollars, what we found out is that HUD does not require us to specifically label a particular park we're going to do the work in for the action plan. What they require is that we would do the work in a park with low to moderate income, low to moderate income area. So, what, historically, what we have been doing was locking ourselves into a little bit of a box, a year in advance, by labeling the park and the amount of dollars. So, what, what we're doing now is there's one-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars, plus we had some money left over from the two thousand twenty action plan. We're going to take those two together, and we're using them as matching funds for two C-two, P-two grants. Those resolutions will be in front of you next week. We just submitted them. One is for Weston Park improvements, ADA and safety requirements, and plus some other amenities to the park that we'll be able to do, and the other's for Connell, for the same ADA and its safety. So, in talking about it with the administration and our, our team at OECD, we feel that this is really, we're able to maximize our dollars because C-two, P-two grants have a fifty percent match. So, if we take this one-hundred-and-eighty-one plus the, you know, I think it's about another one-hundred-and-fifty that we had left over, and take it and ask for that much money from DCNR, we're going to double what we're able to invest in the parks.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. And then, two of the projects that didn't get funded were the Boulevard Avenue and the East Mountain Stormwater Control Improvements. And then, in the one column there, you have that, that the city's looking at other funding pots or grants. Can you just speak to those two projects?
Right. Well, both of those projects are out of the low-to-moderate income footprint. So, we would have to seek special permission from, from HUD for that. Plus, one of them is in a floodplain, which would add another level of difficulty. So, after we talked to this over, we have ARP money that hopefully is on the horizon. The one, one in the East Mountain is eligible for Small Waters Grant from DCD that we could have an application to. So, I think there are other avenues that we could use for those that, that might be a lot easier. That's a lot of hurdles to get through with HUD and DEP for the floodplain, to be able to use those funds for that.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense. And last question for me, in terms of the, the two thousand twenty funding, there was a couple of projects there, and I know Mary Pat had emailed, emailed me earlier and.
Oh, boy. Oh, you're frozen. He's gonzo.
Okay, can everybody hear me? Sorry.
Last thing we got was, um, Mary Pat had emailed you.
Oh, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Knowing you froze.
Yeah. I wonder what my face looked like when I froze. That'd be interesting to see. Okay, sorry about that. So, I, I was curious about the, the two thousand twenty projects, Eileen, and obviously one of them being McLean Park, because it's in my neighborhood. So, I know that Mary Pat said that they're in the design phase. Do you know when the shovels will be in the ground on that? Could you have an idea of when they might break ground?
Well, our target is this summer, so, you know, we're working through design right now. But, so we don't have a firm date. We'll have to procure the, the contractor at that point after design.
Okay, all right, perfect. Okay, so, that's all the questions I have. Does anyone else have any questions for Eileen on Six A? Okay. All right, Eileen, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
You're quite welcome. Have a good night.
I have a question. It's not, it's not related to what we were just speaking of. It was, Eileen, last week or the week before, we, we asked about Pima and reimbursement, and, and you said that we got, what we got from, you know, through the county. So, I just want some clarity, clarity here. So, what we got from the county was reimburse, reimbursements for police and firefighters, their departments?
Well, there was other, pardon?
I just wanted to know if it was just their departments or all departments?
We got reimbursement for some technology as well, for, for IT. The problem came in, and I did reach out to, to Chief Judge, and, and I thought they had sent a, a reply back. But what the county was willing to reimburse for was the exact same items that Pima was willing to reimburse for. So, we already got reimbursed from the county, so we were, we, you know, we had nothing left to apply to Pima for that was eligible. What we had hoped was that any of the entities would have helped with overtime that was related to COVID, but that was not something that was eligible.
It's not eligible, or? I don't know. Maybe I thought it was. Maybe I heard differently, so.
Yeah, that's something they wouldn't help us with.
From any department, overtime in any.
No.
Now, is that, when it comes to overtime, is that something that it has to hit a certain threshold or a cap before it works? I was under the understanding that overtime may have been eligible with the Pima grant, for the Pima.
No, we, we, and I, I was, I didn't deal directly with Pima, but from what the chief had told me, they were not able to get it reimbursed. And I know we did submit it to the county, but it was not eligible there.
Okay, I get, my, I guess my thinking when it came to that, that was the county, the county money, it was a, you know, a specific amount. It was, wasn't it like, I mean, eight-hundred thousand or something like that? So, with that being a specific amount, I thought maybe we could have, you know, maximize some of what we got back by, you know, applying some of that through the Pima and the county as well.
The county did give us a specific amount, if you recall. I think it was five-hundred thousand dollars. They did give us more money than that in the end, because some of the other municipalities were not able to provide receipts to, to fill up what they, they had. We did work together, Chief Lucas and myself. So, whatever I had given to the county for funding, if we suspected that it wasn't going to get funded, I gave it to him, and he submitted it to Pima. It's just that the way it worked out, it wasn't eligible.
Okay. Did we get him, I know the first step of that was getting him logged in as the emergency coordinator there with the Pima site, so we, we got that.
Well, Chief Judge is now, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Eileen. We appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Okay, have a good night. Bye-bye. Okay, everybody, we'll just go over the agenda quickly. So, there's just three pieces in fifth order. Five B is the acceptance of an asphalt roller from the, through an agreement with Keystone Sanitary Landfill. So, we've been down that road before with another piece of equipment, and now this is kind of a regular practice for the city to do an official acceptance of it via legislation. And then, five C is an appointment to the Sewer Authority Board. Pedro Inez is going to get that appointment. And also, five D is an appointment, a new Parks and Rec Director in Brook Newhart. So, does anybody have any questions or anything they'd like to discuss about five B, C, or D?
I guess when looking at five B, I, I think it's all spelled out in the resolution, but all of the terms that were included in that resolution match the, the prior agreement that we've had with them, with them.
Tom, I'll take a look at that again to make sure that it includes all the changes that we had requested in that, when the last piece of equipment was offered, and, and the city asked for us to basically ratify it. So, I'll look at that.
Thank you. And, and also like the, in terms of, you know, tipping fees, the amount of years that we're involved in this, all of that matches?
Right, that's attached, that, that agreement is attached to the, as Exhibit A. I know that. So, that, it's, that's all there. That, that's, that forms the basis of why they give the donation.
Exactly.
So, the one thing that I can't confirm is what the balance is. I know that was questioned in the past. We have to take, I guess, Tom preamble's word on what the balance is. I know that some people had requested an itemization as to how they arrived at that balance, but there wasn't records.
Yeah, and I mean, with this one, I mean, it, it's a yearly value of one-hundred thousand dollars, and this one's, I guess, estimated at twenty-two and a half, give or take, so there should be balance with this as well.
Right.
That, the last one for the, for the backup, that was pretty close to a hundred, correct?
According to them, yes. I think it was valued in excess of ninety, ninety thousand dollars, I thought. Like, I'll, I'll look at all that before we get through final passage. We would still, according to this, we would still have a balance of forty-six thousand dollars for two thousand twenty if we accepted this equipment. In other words, the landfill would still owe forty-six thousand dollars in donations or contributions to the city.
Okay.
Any other questions on fifth order items? Okay, Six A is the CDBG action plan that Eileen just came in to talk to us about. And then, Six B is the Third Avenue, one way from Elm Street down to Boulevard Avenue, and then no parking on the right-hand side if you're coming from Elm Street, from Luzern Street down to Boulevard. So, that, that is hopefully to alleviate some of the issues from the truck traffic, which we've spoken to the neighbors up there. They're all supportive of it. So, I hope that this will, you know, take some burden off of, 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 of them and, and the issues up there. The only question I had on Six B is Kevin, or Laurie, maybe you can answer this. Do we need a public hearing for Six B because we're changing the, the layout of the street from two-way to one-way?
No, but I'll, I'll confirm for sure. I don't believe we do.
Okay. Any questions or comments on Six A or Six B?
I guess other than, I mean, make it in one way, we could estimate probably about fifty percent of the traffic will be cut down. I, I think that would be the, the premise of this.
Well, no, it's, it's because what, what was happening was trucks, not all the time, but sometimes we're coming from Broadway up Third Avenue and then coming from Elm Street. So, it was created, you know, the street's really not that big. So, it was creating an issue, especially when there were baseball games at the, the University of Scranton Complex, which is right next door. So, people would park on the one side there, which is right next to the woods. There's like a little plot of land, and it was just causing kind of chaos there. So, when, when we went out and, and spoke to the neighbors, you know, everybody agreed that that would probably help ease the, ease the burden a little bit. And then, I know in, in talking with the, the mayor, they've been in contact with, with PennDOT to try to push along as quickly as possible, although I think it's still going to be two or three years to replace the actual, the bridge, which will ultimately solve everybody's problem. Any other questions on those two? Okay. And then, seventh order, we have three pieces. Seven A was extending the due date on the EIT. Seven B was the Center Street legislation, and I know that there's going to be, I think, a few amendments to that, if we look at the guide. I think Mark is making those amendments. And then, seven C was a donation in honor for a sign that's going to dedicate the eighteen-hundred block of Rose in Court, a member of Walter Paceyak. So, any questions on the seventh order items? No? Okay. Okay, so that's the agenda. Go around the room now. Kevin, do you have anything on the legal side of things?
Nothing major to report. I don't know if you want to give an update, the, the Biden Road naming committee met yesterday. Like, I was just actually just doing the minutes for that. And I don't know if you want to give an update on that, or?
Yeah, definitely. So, what we, what we're leaning towards now, and we're going to meet probably one or two more times to wrap it up, but what we're leaning towards, after Don King got this information from the post office, the amount of businesses that would have been affected on Wyoming Avenue, we're, we're looking at now a renaming Spruce Street. We felt that that was a better street to, to rename after the president. So, we're, we're discussing now not only Spruce Street, but then the expressway leading into Spruce Street. So, one of the members of the committee was going to get in touch with PennDOT to square up some information there, and I think we'll probably meet again in the next two weeks. But I think Spruce Street, there's, you know, we're going back on the pros and cons of both Wyoming Avenue and Spruce Street, and Spruce Street seemed to us to be the most appropriate avenue to honor the president, and also wouldn't be as onerous on, on businesses and homeowners. Am I missing anything there, Kevin?
No, that's it. Would be, we, we got, you know, the total number of addresses that would be impacted by Wyoming Avenue, which is significant, as opposed to Spruce Street, which is, is not as, it won't, it wouldn't have as far-reaching effect on, on individuals who have addresses and things like that. But that, so, yeah, the consensus was to explore, at this point, to explore Spruce Street in conjunction with the Central Scranton Expressway.
So, we'll have, when, you know, we're going to meet again, I think, within the next, hopefully within the next two weeks to wrap it up, and then we'll have a report for council, and we're, we're going to make sure we have all our i's dotted and our t's crossed in terms of any other, whether it has to be legislation, I'm assuming, and then, you know, have to go in front of potentially the Planning Commission. So, we'll keep everybody up to date on that.
Right. That's it for me, really.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Laurie, do you have anything?
Uh, no, thank you, Councilman Gahn. Nothing at this time.
Thanks, Laurie. Okay, we'll go around the room now. Councilman McAndrew, anything for the good of the order?
Thank you at this time.
Okay, Councilman Schuster?
Councilman Donahue and I went out to Ormond Street. We met some, with some of the neighbors down there. I think Kyle's getting a letter together with PennDOT, and we're waiting for some of the changes to come back on that, on the lighting project that's going to be on Main and Spruce. And one of the residents there, Decker Court, so if, when you come down High Park Avenue, it turns into Decker Court, and the court there, the lighting is, isn't that great, and they were thinking about maybe petitioning the city for a streetlight in the alley. So, something that was brought up in that meeting. Other than that, looking into Ormond Main Street, when I was looking back into the Times, the Times Archives, my great-grandfather was a crossing guard at Ormond Main after his retirement, let's say nineteen sixty-six, nineteen sixty-seven, as long as, as well as North Scranton Junior High School. So, that was a bit of information I found, but other than that, good to me with those neighbors, get that streetlight to peace and, and see what they could do about the parking there on, on Ormond.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Dr. Rothschild, anything?
I think I'm all good. I don't have anything on the evening of tonight.
Okay, great. Just a couple of things. So, I, and I'll bring this up during the regular meeting on the record, but I know that, I think it was Norma Jeffries had asked about the replacement of street signs throughout the city, so I do have an update on that that I'll give during the regular meeting. They've been making a lot of progress there. There's still a lot that has to be replaced, but they're, they're really chipping away at it and doing a good job there. And also, Eileen provided, another resident had asked about the progress on the, the list of homes and that were going to be demolished through OECD funding. So, she did provide me that, so I'll update everyone on that during the regular meeting. And then, our tax collector, Bill Fox, sent us an email. As of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, the city collected over, a little bit over four million dollars in refuse fees, which is an improvement from last year. Previously to the refuse fee being on the tax bills, the city usually never saw any revenue until June. So, that, that's, that's coming in, and it seems to be, you know, what we expected, that we would see a significant amount of revenue because of the change there. So, that was good news.
Do you think the numbers for what the, the total was last year that was collected?
I don't, I don't have it in front of me, but yeah, I'm certain we can get that. It should be in the, one of the reports, the financial reports that we have in, in the office. Laurie could probably send that out to us.
Okay, I was just wondering how that, how that compares to total from last year.
To what it was last year. Yeah, that's a good point.
Thanks.
Okay, that's all I have. Anybody else have anything? Okay, so we have our regular meeting at six-thirty, so we'll take a little bit of a recess here, and we'll start the meeting at six-thirty. Thanks, everyone. I'd like to call this public meeting of Scranton City Council on April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community. Let us also take a moment of silence for all of the people in our community, in our country, and throughout the world who have passed away and are suffering from the COVID-nineteen pandemic. The pandemic has turned our world upside down, but we must remain hopeful and strong. We continue to pray for the doctors, nurses, researchers, and all medical professionals who seek to heal and help those affected and who put themselves at risk in the process. May they have protection and peace. Whether we are here at home or abroad, surrounded by many people suffering from this illness or only a few, let us stick together, endure together, mourn together, and in place of our anxiety, let us have hope and peace. Thank you. Rule call, please?
Mr. Schuster?
President.
Mr. McAndrew?
President.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. Donahue? Mr. Gahn?
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Thank you. Third order, Three A, correspondence received from McTish, Kunkel, and Associates dated March twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one, regarding priority one, bridge repairs over Lackawanna County Rail Authority. Three B, minutes of the Civil Service Commission meeting held March four, two thousand twenty-one. Three C, overtime review for all departments as provided by City Controller dated April five, two thousand twenty-one, for the period January to March, two thousand twenty-one. Three D, minutes of the Scranton Redevelopment Authority Regular Meeting held March three, two thousand twenty-one. Three E, minutes of the Historical Architecture Review Board Meeting held March eleven, two thousand twenty-one. Three F, minutes of the Historical Architecture Review Board Special Meeting held March eighteen, two thousand twenty-one. Three G, correspondence received from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission dated April nine, two thousand twenty-one, regarding application of Pennsylvania American Water Company to alter public crossing where Poplar Street crosses at Pennsylvania Northeast Regional Railroad Authority.
Thank you. Are there any comments in any of the third order items? If not received and filed. Mrs. Reed, our city clerk, would like to make an announcement at this time.
Thank you, Councilman Gahn, and thank you, Council, for the opportunity to address you this evening. As you are aware, I will be retiring from the city of Scranton from my position as city clerk on April thirtieth. It has been an honor to serve the city for the past eighteen years and to serve as city clerk for almost eight of those years. I have truly enjoyed serving as the city clerk and my professional dealings with the current and past councils. I appreciate this current council's patience and resilience as we were confronted with the unprecedented challenges due to the COVID pandemic. I am very proud of the fact that we continue to fully operate during this pandemic and to meet the needs of city government despite these challenges. The decision to enter retirement was not an easy one. I have given considerable thought to this decision. However, if we've learned anything over the course of this past year, it is that we shouldn't take anything for granted. Although serving as city clerk has been very fulfilling, it did occupy most of my time and take me away from time that I could be spending with my family and grandchildren. I'm committed to assisting this council and its transition to a new clerk. We have made tremendous progress in streamlining the legislative process, and I will do everything I can to maintain these operations for the betterment of council and the city. I would like to thank, excuse me, I would like to thank the mayor, her administration, and this council for their friendship and support. It has been my sincerest honor and pleasure to serve the city and its. It has been my sincerest honor and pleasure to serve the city and its council. Thank you, Councilman Gawn.
Thank you, Lori. And I, I just want to take a second um and, and say a few things. Lori and I have been working together uh for the last eight years and even before that, when we were in OECD. And just so everybody uh in the public knows, the, the job of being a city clerk is, is much more than just being a clerk or a secretary. It's actually a really, really important job. Um, and I've often said in the past that the clerk is really the, the sixth council person. Um, very few people know what goes into making this council in our office operate effectively and efficiently on a day-to-day basis. The preparation for the meetings, the behind-the-scenes work that must be done, um, the attention to detail, putting out fires every hour of the day, working with city, county, state, and federal officials. And Lori has done a phenomenal job the past eight years at making it all work and doing it in such a selfless way on behalf of uh this council and the people of the city. Um, I am really happy for Lori uh that she's retiring and she can spend more time with uh her beautiful grandchildren and her family. But I have to be honest, I'm, I'm gonna be lost uh without her i- in this position. Uh, it's gonna be a big adjustment, uh especially for me. We, we've been working together the past eight years and she's been by my side, uh been my sidekick uh through it all. So as I mentioned earlier, I got to know Lori during our, our time working with each other years ago in OECD. And I was just thinking of this this morning, you know, Lori has been um, like I said, by my side through when I uh got married, when I had all my children, every big event in my life, Lori has, has been uh there in the picture. So uh I'm, I'm gonna miss her a lot in this position. Um, she is one of the most respected public servants in city government. And I have seen firsthand the, the passion that she has for the city, which is why she's been so successful as, as a city clerk. She has and has had a unique ability to put people at ease with her steady and very calm demeanor. Uh, she's trustworthy, she's kind, and she knows how to get things done. So Lori, I want to thank you very much for the work you've done, for all the help you've given me. I know that I have been uh sometimes very frustrating to deal with. I had that type of personality at times. Um, but you've given me so much help and so much guidance over the years and all the work that you've done for the council and for the people of the city. I really appreciate it, working with you on behalf of the citizens of Scranton. And you've been a, a very, very uh good friend uh to me. So thank you and I, and I wish you the best of luck. And you're gonna be missed and I'm not sure yet how we're gonna replace you. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else like to say anything?
Yes, um, Lori, I don't know what to say. First of all, I'm not gonna say goodbye. I'm gonna say best of luck. I don't know what we're gonna do without you. But I wish you all the best in, in all your endeavors and, and enjoy your retirement. You deserve it.
Um, yeah, I'll just, just add to all that. I mean, um, uh, Councilman Guy, you really uh said it perfectly. She's um a really integral part of our, our team here uh at council. And I really appreciated having her um over the past um, you know, uh year and a half or so um that, that I've been serving on council. Um, you could go to her for anything and um she, she's always happy to, to find the answers or to contact whoever um we need to reach out to. And um our jobs would be a lot more difficult uh without her. And um so I, I wish her a happy retirement. Uh, I know we have a couple more meetings left with her, but um it'll definitely be hard to, to replace her. Um, and uh, yeah, I wish her the, the best of luck.
I also would like to wish Lori the best of luck and a happy retirement. Um, I, I did know Lori prior to coming on to council. And uh, uh, when I made my switch and came over to council, I was happy to be working with her. She was a familiar face uh and someone that I can go to. Um, since the start of the pandemic, I've been telling her that I, I can't wait to see her in person. And uh, I guess that might not occur. Um, but um, best of luck, Lori, and I'll, I'll keep in touch.
Thank you. Do any uh council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a quick one. So um, Naug, Naug Park for mother, is gonna have a Mother's Day drive for St. Joseph's Baby Pantry. This is fantastic. It's gonna be Mother's Day weekend, May eighth and May ninth, nine AM to three PM, Saturday and Sunday. What they wish is to help us stock their pantry, so no child has to do without diapers, formula, wipes, lotions, baby powder, sippy cups, baby food, and baby cereals. But please, at this time, no clothing or furniture will be accepted. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have one. We have very good news to announce tonight. Uh, a big congratulations is in order for our colleague, Councilman Kyle Donahue. His wife, Mary Kate, had a beautiful baby girl, Margaret Mary Donahue, uh clocking in at six pounds and ten ounces. So uh congratulations to Kyle and best of luck to him, his wife, and his uh newborn.
Yeah, congratulations, Big Daddy Donahue.
Congratulations, Kyle. I had um, I did have a, a few other uh announcements.
Oh, sure.
I wanted to add real quick here. Um, first off, um, for the uh, I, I know I mentioned it uh previously, the porch fest that happened a few weeks ago uh was really successful. And um, so there are some neighbors in the Hill section that are putting together um live music on uh Saturday, April seventeenth. And um, it'll be, you know, a free event, but donations are, are welcome. And that would go to the musicians that would be performing. Um, there will be social distancing, of course, and uh it's a great way to be able to, to meet your neighbors or even if you're not in the neighborhood, um, anyone and, uh, anyone can, can attend. Um, it's a good way to support the arts as well. Um, and uh, so it's gonna be running from twelve to five PM, Saturday, April seventeenth. And it's going to be at a few different locations um uh along like Ash Street, Taylor Avenue, North Irving, uh and then Crotty's on Ash at, at five PM. So um, I believe Kristin Powers posted the details, uh at least in the, the Hill neighborhood Facebook groups. But um, I have some more details if anyone's interested. And then um, uh, the other announcement that I wanted to make um was uh that there's going to be a COVID-nineteen vaccination clinic. It's gonna be the Pfizer um vaccine. And the Scranton Fringe Festival just announced it today. They're actually gonna be hosting it. Um, they're very limited on how many vaccinations and vaccines they have. So you'll wanna get registered right away. Uh, the first um, the first day of it is going to be Thursday, April twenty-second. And that's gonna be held at the Afa Gallery um downtown on Lackawanna Avenue. And that's uh from ten to five PM. Um, and so uh, like I said, you don't need to register. Uh, the information for that could be found uh through the Scranton Fringe Festival or I have it um posted to my um council Facebook page as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any other announcements? Okay, very good. Mrs. Reed?
Thank you. Fourth order, citizens' participation.
At this time, would someone please make a motion to accept public comment from the following individuals? Albert Young?
I'll make a motion to accept public comment.
There's been a motion in a second to accept public comment. Mrs. Reed, would you please read the comment into the record?
Thank you. The submission is as follows. Members of Scranton Council, this is ironic. Councilman Donahue stated that it was discussed within that possibility of making some improvement to our backyard. Great. Absolutely nothing has happened yet. Then after talking to a member of the contracted firm late last week, it was mentioned that, and again, I quote, "The city does not want to dig twice," unquote. I guess the city thinks I was born yesterday. If and when DEP does decide to come in and finish their long overdue process, they may skip over the temporary repair that was done two years ago, and we will still be left with a mess. There has been damage to the driveway along with leaving a messed up yard in disarray. This is okay with the city? They only want the tax money, but it is okay if things are left, so we live in a pigsty. It is funny to me that it is okay for the city to spend the taxpayers' dollars like drunken sailors on other things, but cannot complete contracted work. It is known that the city has outspent the jury awarded monies by far. A short list is noted here. Solicitor retainer fees for four attorneys, overpriced engineering plans, contractor's fee for temporary repair to the stormwater culvert on Wyoming Avenue, plus the bill for excessive hours used for court appearances to the tune of more than one hundred fifty thousand dollars. And still there is a holdout for the regrading and paving. And of course, to fact, the city still holds us hostage, or is it hold harmless? And that is all.
Thank you. Uh, on the question? On the question, if we can send something to the administration to see if there's a way that um, did I freeze for a second there?
You're good.
Okay. Uh, if we could send a letter to the, sorry, I think I froze again. Am I okay? Okay, sorry. I, what I was gonna say is, I'd like to send a letter to the administration asking if there's any way possible to at least make the yards there livable until the project is started and completed. I've been a part of the Young story for, since I've been on council and the whole thing's very unfortunate. Um, I think the least, if the city, if there's any way that they can just at least go out and make it so that they don't have a mess all over the place. Cause we're, as uh Solicitor O'Brien said, it could be a little while until they get out and, and start and finish the project. So if we can do that and see if uh anything could be done, I'd appreciate it. Anyone else on the question?
Yeah, on the questions. Thank you, Mr. Guyhan, for, for bringing that up. I know we raised it a couple of weeks ago. Um, and we, we did ask um the administration to uh, to take a look at that piece. I, I don't think we got any, any response back as of yet. But um, yeah, I'll agree. Let's send that over again and, and see what they have to say.
Yeah, please, God, let's plant some grass for Mr. Young for this summer. I mean, we, we have, we have parks and wrecks that plant grass. Just, just go over it and, and I know, I know there's litigation. I don't wanna hear about litigation anymore. This, this man deserves a summer with some grass. Please, thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Fifth order, five A motions.
Councilman Schuster, any motions or comments?
Um, I'd just like to send out um condolences to the Sikelsky family. Um, very sorry for your loss. And also say that me and Councilman Donahue uh had a chance to, to go out to Orm Street and Main Avenue to take a look at um the planned work for PennDOT. We're just waiting on um some changes to that plan, so we'll see that when it comes. That's all. Oh, uh, sorry, one more thing. Uh, we did get um an email from uh Mr. Howells on Clearview Street thanking us for um identifying that there were some signs with the, some uh issues with signs um in tractor trailers using that street and going down into the dead end. So happy to hear that um something was done about that, that some signage was put up. And uh, they're saying that there's no, there's no tractor trailers entering um the streets down there um off of Euclid and Clearview. That's all.
Okay, great. Thank you, uh, Councilman Schuster. Councilman McCandrick, any motions or comments?
Yes, I would like, like to also offer my condolences to the tragedy for this, of the Sikelsky family that happened here on West Side earlier this week. Well, you know, our hearts and prayers go out to this poor family.
I agree. Thank you. Dr. Rothschild, any motions or comments?
Um, yes, I had um just a couple of quick things. Um, first off, I, I wanted to thank um Director Cipriani for um coming in to explain um the application for um, for the funding and um, I, you know, I'm really happy to see the amount that we're receiving. I hope that um there'll be even more that, that comes through. Um, I think that it'd be really helpful uh for the city. And um, the other thing that I wanted to add um, um, sorry, I was just looking through my notes. Um, I spoke with uh the administration yesterday um and, and Mayor Cognetti about um some issues along Harrison Avenue, particularly the uh safety issues with pedestrian crossings and uh the speed of traffic. So uh, we're inquiring about a possible traffic study um to see what we, what we can do about that. Uh, and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I just have a couple of comments. As I mentioned in the caucus, uh Director Prambo of the DPW had updated us, updated us on the uh replacement of signs throughout the city. So if anyone's interested, he attached an Excel spreadsheet showing the signs that have been replaced this year to uh March, I think uh the middle or the end of March. So if anyone's interested in that, uh, I can forward that along. Or if anyone in the public is interested, uh, they are keeping track of that now, which is a good thing. Um, there, he provided a summary of the three type of signs that should be at the top of the replacement list by priority. So those were stop signs throughout the city. There's seven hundred approximately that still need to be replaced because they're faded or damaged. Uh, speed limit signs, there's two hundred and seventy-eight that still have to be replaced. And then the biggest uh item there would be street name signs, and that's one thousand five hundred and twenty-five that still need to be uh replaced. So they're working on uh attacking that, those issues and, and replacing those signs. So I want to thank them for uh doing that. The second thing I had was, I had asked for, um, our resident had asked me what the plan was for demolition in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, Director Cipriani, Cipriani responded that there's gonna be two phases of demolition in two thousand twenty-one and possibly a third if the city's awarded a DCD grant that they applied for. Uh, phase one is currently out for bid. Phase two, the list is being compiled. Um, the list is always subject to change if a property sold or, or, or something ends up happening. Um, there's a list of uh properties, uh fifteen, actually fourteen total. And then the fifteenth would be the Naug Pools and the Weston Park uh bathhouse. So uh, that list is here if anybody would like to see it. I'll run through it really quick. Seven-ten, seven-twelve North Bromley, five-twenty-five North Bromley, two-oh-nine, two-eleven St. Francis Cabrini, three-thirteen, three-fifteen St. Francis Cabrini, eight-thirteen Hampton Street, three-thirty-six South Hyde Park Ave, six-oh-seven North Hyde Park Ave, eleven-twenty-nine Swetland Street, twelve-ten Swetland Street, six-twenty, six-twenty-two uh Pine, sixteen-thirty-five Sanderson, uh five-oh-five uh Twelfth Avenue, six-sixteen Cedar Avenue, ten-twenty-five Bergen Court. So those are the fourteen that's at least for phase one. Um, so I'm sure people in those neighborhoods will be happy. Uh, these uh, these properties are, are definitely a nice one. And that's all I have this week. Thank you.
Five B for introduction. A resolution authorizing the acceptance by the City of Scranton by Keystone Sanitary Landfill of a John Deere Bomag BW Asphalt Roller. Number as noted, per Sourcewell Contract Number zero-three-two-one-one-nine-bai from Five Star Equipment.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second?
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Five C for introduction. A resolution, appointment of Pedro Inez, five-five-five Seymour Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, one-eight-five-oh-five, to serve as a member of the Scranton Sewer Authority Board effective March twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one for a five-year term that will expire on March twenty-six, two thousand twenty-six.
At this time, sorry,
excuse me, Mr. Inez will replace Larry Bocadore, whose term expired on December thirty-one, two thousand seventeen.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Against.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Five D for introduction. A resolution, appointment of Brooke Newhart, three-thirty-one Ferdinand Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, one-eight-five-oh-eight, as Parks and Recreation Director for the City of Scranton, effective March twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-one.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? Um, on the question, I, I want to wish uh, Miss, Mrs. Newheart, the best of luck in her new position. And I also want to thank Brian Fallon for the uh, outstanding job that he did as Parks and Recreation Director. Um, I've gotten, I've known Brian even before he took the position. Um, but he did a really great job in keeping our parks um, in, in good condition. Uh, he was a, a good leader in that department and uh, he had a really good crew behind him and uh, he, he did great work for the city. So he will definitely be missed. Anyone else on the question?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to echo those comments. Thank you to uh, Brian Fallon for all the work that he did for our Parks and Recs and um, congratulations to Brooke Newheart. Uh, we look forward to having her.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of the council number 65, 2021, and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the City of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the HUD 2021 Annual Action Plan for Community Planning and Development Programs to be funded under the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program, and Emergency Solutions Grants Program for the period beginning January 1, 2021.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A, pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
6B, reading by title, file of the council number 66, 2021, and ordinance authorizing the City of Scranton to approve the designation of Third Avenue as one-way northbound from Elm Street to its intersection with Broadway Street, with the installation of two R5-1 do-not-enter signs at the intersection of Third Avenue and Broadway Street. Our 6-1L horizontal left one-way sign shall be installed at the intersections of Third Avenue and Regan Place, Third Avenue and Fellow Street, Third Avenue and Luzerne Street, and Third Avenue and Broadway Street, along with no parking designated on the Easterly side of Third Avenue from Luzerne Street North to Broadway Street, and that 6R8-3 no-parking symbol sign, four with R-301 no-parking arrow plaque, one with R-301 no-parking left arrow plaque, and one with R-301 no-parking right arrow plaque be installed under the direction of the city engineer to allow for improved access from Third Avenue onto Broadway Street.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that 6B, pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? On the question, uh, I brought this up in caucus. Just make sure that um, uh, if we need a public hearing on this or not. So we'll figure that out before next week. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, file of the council number 63, 2021, amending file of the council number 41, 2020 entitles, amending file of the council number 11, 1976 entitles, and ordinance as amended, enacting imposing a tax for general revenue purposes in the amount of 2% on earned income and net profits on persons, individuals, associations, and businesses who are residents of the City of Scranton or non-residents of the City of Scranton for work done, services performed, or business conducted within the City of Scranton, requiring the filing of returns by taxpayers subject to the tax, requiring employers to collect the tax at source, providing for the administration, collection, and enforcement of the said tax, and imposing penalties for the violations by reenacting the imposition of the wage tax at 2 and 4 tenths percent on earned income for residents and 1% on earned income for non-residents of the City of Scranton for work done, services performed, or business conducted within the City of Scranton for the year 2021. And the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter by extending the date that the taxes are due and owing for general revenue purposes on earned income from its original due date of April 15, 2021, to May 17, 2021, in conformity with the United States Treasury Department and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
Chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, file of the council number 64, 2021, amending file of the council number 31, 2020 as amended, and ordinance authorizing the City of Scranton to approve the designation of the 300 block of Center Street as a one-way street from Penn Avenue towards Wyoming Avenue, with the Scranton Police Department to enforce the designations as reflected in the attached drawing, C-4 Center Street Parking, to change the direction of the one-way travel from Wyoming Avenue to Penn Avenue.
I make a motion to amend item 7B as follows. To strike the summary title and replace it with the following title. Authorizing the designation of the 300 block of Center as a one-way street in the direction from Wyoming Avenue towards Penn Avenue, with the Scranton Police Department to enforce this designation, and repealing file of the council number 31, 2020 as amended. An ordinance authorizing the City of Scranton to approve the designation of the 300 block of Center Street as a one-way street from Penn Avenue towards Wyoming Avenue, with the Scranton Police Department to enforce the designations as reflected in the attached drawing, C4 Center Street Parking. And the second, whereas clause, strike the word amend and replace it with repeal, and insert new language to read and replace it with this part. Immediately following the ordinance number in section one. Strike the word amend and replace it with, replace with this part.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to amend item 7B. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved. What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7B as amended.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B as amended legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, Resolution Number 152, 2021, accepting a donation presented to the City of Scranton from 9/11 Memorial Committee of Lackawanna County in the amount of $145 to purchase a sign that will be used to dedicate the 1800 block of Rosenport in memory of Walter A. Pace X.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As the chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final, final passage, passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, it's, it's very nice to see a World War II vet honored in this way.
I agree. Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, old business, nothing at this time.
Thank you. And uh, really quick, before we adjourn the meeting, I failed to mention this earlier. Uh, council is going to accept resumes and letters of interest for the position of city clerk, uh, since Mrs. Reed is retiring at the end of the month. So we will accept those resumes and letters of interest for the position until next Tuesday at 4:00 PM. Uh, please send those, and that date would be the 20th of April. So Tuesday, April 20th at 4:00 PM. Uh, please send them to uh, Lori Reed, City Clerk, Lread@ScrantonPA.gov. So that's the email, Lread@ScrantonPA.gov. Or you can mail your letter of interest and resume to 340 North Washington Avenue, second floor, City Clerk's Office, 18503, Scranton, Pennsylvania. Um, attention, City Clerk Lori Reed. And then we will uh, deliberate and make a decision next week, hopefully. Okay. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice night. Be safe.
Have a nice night.